Noting the time, oh, yep, sorry. Noting the time, I'm calling the Acton Select Board meeting to order. We have Alyssa joining us remotely. And Dean had a family matter, so he won't be with us tonight. And so first up is residents' concerns. If there's a resident in the audience that would like to voice their concerns, please state your name and your address.
... of DPW neighbors by building sidewalks. The inherent danger of an industrial operation in a residential neighborhood has greatly increased since 1969. Third and finally, I note that I attended the Scheduled Transportation Advisory Committee Zoom on January 22, 2025, but nobody from TAC was on the Zoom. After the fact, I learned that sidewalks on Forest Road had been added to the TAC agenda, which I appreciate. But just as there were extenuating circumstances that pushed sidewalks for the neighbors of the North Acton Fire Station to the quote "top of the list," unquote, namely the construction of the North Acton Fire Station, the DPW project is an extenuating circumstance that should push sidewalks for the DPW neighbors to the top of the list, as should have been done 55 years ago. And it is this board, the Acton Select Board, that has the authority to make that happen. Eric Heels, 17 Forest Road, Actonian since 1995.
Thank you. Residents' concerns. Onto Chair update, which I have none. So I will move to the Town Manager.
Thank you. I have three real estate-related updates. The first is that we have, for the last several months, had a contractor working for the Assessors Office doing inspections of properties as part of the 10-year cyclical revaluation of every property in town. This is not anything that was a new initiative. It's something that we're required to do from Mass DOR. And the purpose of the project is to just make sure that the property record card that we have for everybody's house matches what is in your house. So that if it says you have three bathrooms and you only have two bathrooms, that correction can be made at that time, or the reverse of that can be made at that time. So if you have questions about that, please reach out to the Assessors Office. The inspectors are contractors and they do... So we work closely to make sure that they're meeting our expectations for customer service. And if you have any concerns about that, please reach out to my office. We'll continue to keep an eye on that. The other two real estate items are... One is that the town, with the closing for the McManus Manor property was last week. And so I just wanted to announce that. It's something that we've... The board has been working on for a long time. The community has been working on for a long time. And a lot of different people have been involved in that. And the closing was last week. They're already having construction meetings, so things are going to start to happen out there very soon. So that's very exciting. And then the third real estate matter is that we also, on last week, signed the lease with the Acton Food Pantry for them to officially take over control of the 19 and 21 Maple Street property. They are planning a pretty major renovation of that space this year. And so that is something that they're going to start working on in March, I believe, after they do some permitting work and design work. So a lot of exciting things happening in real estate. And a lot of the board's goals are being accomplished with the work that everyone's been doing. So I just wanted to mention those things.
Thank you. Any members' minutes? No? David?
Hi, just one thing. There's a working group that's proceeding on drafting the conservation restriction for the Weatherby property that we voted to acquire at the town meeting just before Thanksgiving. And today, we had a site walk looking for some features of the property that may indicate that indigenous people were there. So it was just... It's just part of that process. I just wanted to mention it because we're moving forward. Because of some requirements of the grant, we have to be done with the whole process with the conservation restriction by June.
Alyssa, do you have an update?
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Town Manager shared with the board that the state recently recalculated our subsidized housing inventory. And we are now just above 10% at 10.58%. And I also wanted to share, although if you are a reader of the Acton Exchange, you may already know this, but our Town Manager was recently elected to the president position for the Mass Municipal Management Association. So congratulations to John and congratulations to Acton.
Thank you, Alyssa. We have a few more minutes before our public hearing. A couple.
Madam Chair, would you like to take the consent items?
Sure. 14, approved meeting minutes, January 13, 2025. 15, approved 2025 Acton Boxborough Farmer's Market license agreement for Elm Street Playground. 16, accept donation from Middle...
I want to hold that item. Just I have a question about it.
Yep.
Yeah.
16, accept donation from Middlesex Bank for $2,500 towards the Acton 250th Gift Fund. 17, accept donation from Dennis and Denise LeBlanc for $120 towards the Council on Aging gift account.
I move to approve consent items 14, 16, and 17.
Second.
Did Clerk call a roll? Do we have to call?
Yes.
Yeah, we do, yep.
Yeah. Ms. Nickel votes aye. Mr. Snyder-Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And Ms. Arsenal?
Aye.
For 15, if you'd like to.
Yeah, my question was regarding parking. I know that there were some issues with residents and other visitors to the farmer's market at that location not being very clear on where parking was allowed. And I was wondering if that was all sorted out and if it would be more clearly marked this year to avoid those issues this coming summer.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Alyssa. David?
Can I just say that I thought it was... Two years ago, it was definitely unclear and confusing. Last year, it was clear. And people were parking in the Boardwalk Campus parking. And that was pretty clear. I think that people walked from the Boardwalk Campus parking where the basketball court is to the Elm Street Tennis Courts where the farmer's market is.
So parking on Elm Street is not permitted, then?
It wasn't last year. There were... It was signed by the police.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to our first public hearing. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Yep.
I will move to approve consent item 15.
Second.
Call the roll.
And Ms. Nickel votes aye. Mr. Snyder-Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And Ms. Arsenal?
Aye.
Now, moving on to the public hearings. First, our 7:10 hearing for a Site Plan Special Permit, 0624 2024 492, AHC Incorporated in Thomas Buckboro, 358A and 358B Great Road. The Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Friday, February 3, 2025, at 7:10 p.m., continued from January 13, 2025, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton and virtually at actonmass.gov/meeting/selectboard on the application of AHC Incorporated in Thomas Buckboro for a Site Plan Special Permit under zoning bylaw section 10.4 at 358A and 358B Great Road. The proposed project consists of construction of two additions to the single-family dwelling and the rebuilding of the office space into a mixed-use building consisting of a retail space and three dwelling units. Application materials and how to participate remotely are available online and at Acton Town Hall. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, sure.
So, good evening, members of the board. Kayla Sauer, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. So if you recall, we left off in December with the board considering two waiver requests under Chapter X. The board had continued the hearing on getting more information from GCG, the town's third-party civil engineer, on what, to the maximum extent, practical meant. So Paul, GCG, and I were able to meet today. And Paul submitted updated plans that GCG reviewed and confirms can meet the maximum extent practical. So I'll turn it over to Paul to kind of discuss a little bit more.
Yeah, good evening. For the record, Paul Kirchner from Stamske McHenry on behalf of the applicant or the engineers and surveyors for the project. So as Kayla said, we did have a Zoom meeting with GCG, Kayla, and Chin, the Town Engineer, to talk about the waiver request that we made to the Chapter X rules and regulations related to stormwater retention. So we did come to an agreement. There is, with GCG, that if we designate the area sort of to the rear of the bill plans, does result in the project meeting those standards to the extent practical. Thank you.
Yeah, and at this point, the Planning Division and GCG would recommend granting the waivers, the two waivers under Chapter X, as the applicant was able to provide a solution that met the maximum extent practical and has also been able to improve the existing conditions on the site.
Thank you, Kayla. Are there any other questions by members? Jim?
There was a memo before from you guys about why a waiver wasn't necessary. Can you explain, for the non-technically-minded, where that's ended up in this process? Because it seems like you've agreed that there should be a waiver. And I just wanted to understand what had shifted in your thinking.
Yeah, so really, ultimately, what it comes down to is in the Land Disturbance Rules and Regulations, it defines redevelopment and new development. So it doesn't rely on the definitions provided by the stormwater standards. It has its own definition for redevelopment. So the requirements for stormwater retention are different for redevelopment versus new development. It's .8 inches versus 1 inch. If you read through the Land Disturbance Amendment Rules and regs, it's pretty clear that, to me at least, that it's only anticipating applications where impervious surface is increased. This project is actually reducing impervious surface. So if you're looking at the stormwater standards, that's what redevelopment means per the state stormwater standards. It always means a reduction in impervious surface. The Chapter X rules and regs don't look at it that way, which is why we'd be subject to that .8-inch requirement. Now, if you look at the application itself under Type 1 Erosion Control Permit Only, one of the criteria, you know, according to that application for it to be a Type 1 permit is reduction in impervious surface. It says that on the application. So that was our stance. We don't think we need a waiver. Under Type 1, that's what it says. But that's not really in the regulations. It's just on the application itself. So whereas I want to rely on the application because that's really the only place where this reduction is addressed. You know, I don't think we need a waiver. But I understand it's not actually written in the regulations. So GCG feels that a waiver is requested, and we're fine with that.
And Jim?
A follow-up question. Since we don't have the... I don't seem to have the plans right in front of us. Could you describe that vegetative buffer? And, you know, the size of it and what impact it will have on the runoff?
Madam Chair, could I share this?
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, let's wait to have something to look at.
If you go to the previous page, it's probably the best sheet to look at. Sheet 3. Yep, there we go. So it's the single-family dwelling structure is on the right side. This gravel area where this vegetated filter strip is proposed is behind it. So what this is... A vegetated filter strip is in the stormwater handbook as a BMP. It's a treatment device. So it's pretty simple. It's grass. Water runs off of typically a parking lot, goes into this grass area. The grass slows down the runoff, kind of mixes it up, so sediment will fall out. Typically, that's prior to discharge to some sort of infiltration structure. But it can also just be to the woods or wherever beyond the limits of that vegetated filter strip. So in this case, we are not proposing an additional BMP downgrade of this vegetated filter strip. But this grass area with regular maintenance will allow for that enhanced sediment removal. So we are already proposing making this area grass. The importance of actually including it in our stormwater report and the operation and maintenance plan is that it will be regularly maintained so it can continue to perform its function. You know, the idea is sediment falls out. Well, if you don't clean that sediment up every once in a while, it's going to stop doing its job. So that's really the bulk of the maintenance. You mow it, but also you remove the sediment if appreciable amounts, you know, are found. So it's an annual inspection. That's how it performs.
Jim, sure. Yep.
Maybe this is a question for Kayla. Is there standard language for the maintenance of these kinds of buffers? And is... And how does that fit into any conditions that we might grant? Because I assume we should have a condition that requires this maintenance.
Yes, so Paul, earlier today, actually provided an updated operations and maintenance plan. So that's required with any type of, you know, Site Plan Special Permit. So he did provide that language, and that would be part of the records for the decision. And requiring they upkeep the ONM is pretty... It's in our standard conditions.
David?
So just from my understanding here, it's behind the... This area is behind the garage for the residents? Is that right?
That's correct, yep.
And you said you're flattening it beyond the edge of the pavement? How far out from the edge of the pavement?
I'm going to have to estimate it a little bit because I don't have that number off the top of my head. So you get to the edge of the pavement, and then there's a hill. It's about 3:1, 4:1 grade, you know, 25% to 30% grade. It drops down from elevation 194 to 183. So it's about a 10-foot drop. And then that's where the flat area is. So right now, the slope of that area is about 7%. The state standards for vegetated filter strip BMP requires between 2 and 6%. So we're just flattening it somewhat to bring it to 5%. So it's a very subtle change in grade. They're going to have to remove the gravel and replace it with topsoil anyway. So just while they're doing that, slight flattening. Honestly, if you're out there, you wouldn't even notice the difference if you went before and after in grade because it's already pretty flat. But it's just cutting the grade down, you know, closer to the edge of pavement. So on the wetland side of the area, it'll be the same as it currently is. And just flatten it. And then, once you meet up with that slope, just tie in.
Thank you.
Alyssa, do you have any questions? We can't see your face at the moment, but yeah, okay.
Oh, I do have my hand up. So in our December meeting, Jim had some questions about the DRB memo and whether the applicant had been able to address all of their comments. And Kayla provided an update that I would love for her to share with all of you and see if we want to add in a condition or if we're all set with the way things stand now.
Yes, I can provide an update on that. So after the last meeting, Jim, you asked for, you know, an update on that. I reached out and touched base with Peter Darlow, who's the Chair of the Design Review Board. He was able to review the updated architectural plans. From his review, the single-family home, he was... It met all the criteria. There was a couple of minor items that were left out of the proposed mixed-use structure. That has to do with the windows. I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull it up. The windows on one of the sides, they didn't meet what their recommendation was. So if the board is inclined to approve the permit tonight, I think that's something that could easily be included as a condition, that it would get approval from the DRB specific to that memo that they wrote.
And I was curious if they had been to HC Historical Commission?
They have for the... One of them. Sorry.
Yeah, 358A, which is the single-family house, they have been before a historical commission. They're not going to be subject to demo delay. 358B, they are on next week's agenda. So they have a site walk tomorrow in the morning. I'm not really involved in that process, but they are on the next agenda with the Historical Commission.
And I was able to pull up what Peter said. Apologies for that earlier. So it's specific on the right side of the elevation. It should have a similar window pattern to the left side, but right now is currently lacking.
David?
I was just wondering if we have a list of conditions prepared and where that is.
Great question. Depending on what the outcome of tonight was, what I would suggest at this point, if you feel like you have enough information, the board could close the public hearing, and I could draft a draft decision for your next meeting, which would be the 24th, and have that available for you.
Madam Chair, also there's... I don't know if anybody here wants to, but there's one person online with their hand raised.
Are there any in the room that would like to speak? No. I'll take the online caller.
Hi, this is Tara from up here in Mass Ave, and I have a question. May... Is Town Council in the room?
No.
Maybe staff can answer this. So by giving the applicant a waiver for Stormwater X, does that mean that the applicant, moving forward, will not have to meet Stormwater X requirements like the rest of us do? So that's my first question. So I'm... Or is it just the waiver of having to do some kind of analysis? So that's my question. Then I'll have a comment after that, depending on the answer.
Kayla? Yeah.
Yeah, so the waiver is actually pretty typically granted in redevelopment projects. In this case, GCG recommended a little bit more from the applicant because of the proximity to the riverfront. So that is why they required, or suggested to the board, requiring a little bit more than what they typically do. But it is actually a typical waiver that we see with redevelopment.
So I don't feel like I've got an answer to my question. So what... Does that mean that the applicant would now not have to meet Stormwater X? Because it's my understanding Stormwater X requires everybody to keep their stormwater on their property unless they have a special permit. Are you saying that such a waiver will allow them to flood into the stream? I'm trying to understand what the waiver is for, I guess. And then I would urge the board to make sure that they actually adhere to Stormwater X, not give waivers to our bylaws moving forward. If it's just to do the analysis, that's one thing. But to give somebody a waiver for the bylaw seems troublesome.
So it's a very specific section of Chapter X. So they would have to comply with all other sections. And Paul, you might be able to speak a little bit more to what the specific section is of Chapter X.
Yeah, so what Chapter X requires, amongst other things, is that you can't increase stormwater runoff to off-site. So you need to ensure that the post-development runoff doesn't exceed the pre-development runoff, not that you need to retain everything. So this specific requirement that we've requested waiver to is sort of separate from that rate reduction that's required. But that section of Chapter X requires that a certain volume of runoff be retained on-site, .8 inches across the impervious surface, as I've stated. So we've requested waiver to that. We do have an infiltration trench that does provide some storage, but it doesn't meet that .8-inch storage volume requirement. GCG has agreed with us that with this vegetated filter strip, you know, we meet... We provide stormwater to the extent practicable. We haven't provided drainage calculations to show specifically that, you know, the runoff rates. However, we're reducing impervious surface. We're not cutting any trees. So calculations are not necessary in this instance. It's intuitive that stormwater will not be increased. There's going to be less impervious. You know, usually when you're doing stormwater, that's kind of the crux of the whole issue. We're paving a large area. Of course, there'll be an increase in stormwater runoff. In this case, we're not adding any impervious. Drainage characteristics are going to be maintained. We're providing some infrastructure in order to meet some of the aims of Chapter X. But in any case, what we're... We've requested a waiver to is specifically related to retaining a volume of runoff across the impervious.
Yes, thank you. That's what I thought. So I would urge the board to not grant a waiver to allow them to effectively put more stormwater out in the future. If you're going to grant a waiver, I would add a comma, as long as they don't exceed XYZ. So that it's clear that they are adhering to Stormwater X like everybody else in town has to. Thank you.
David?
So just to make things clear, that my understanding of this is that that runoff area will accommodate runoff from .8 inch. Is that correct?
No, that... We're requesting waiver to not provide that storage volume. The vegetated filter strip is sort of in lieu of that. So it's proposed in order to enhance water quality. It will provide some additional recharge, but that's not really the primary intent of this area. It's to improve water quality. So essentially, rather than storing .8 inches, we have provided this water-quality treatment device. But then, just to reiterate, we will not be increasing runoff to the stream. We are reducing impervious. The other thing I want to make clear is that, you know, this waiver is only for this site plan application. If they wanted to do something else in the future, we're looking at this again. So this only covers them for this one application that we've submitted.
David?
So I understand this, and I'm... For me, I'm comfortable with this. You know, this is in lieu of having structures to retain the runoff. So considering that the impervious surface is being reduced, I think that makes sense. It's kind of a compromise. So it makes sense to me.
Jim?
Do we have any evidence, one way or the other, about past runoff issues from this site? Has there been lots of stormwater, you know, getting into the river? Is there other, have there been signs of erosion? You know, so I guess I want to make sure that if the, if the, if the runoff remains about the same, is the, is the, you know, or less, is the current situation tenable for the, for the environment there?
I'm not aware of any issues. I don't know. However, I would expect, you know, were there issues that Chin or somebody from the town would, would let us know? Because Chin is familiar with the drainage problems there at town, so I trust her judgment. And if there were a problem, I would have expected to hear from her.
Yeah, I would agree. There is no drainage issues we've heard of before. And I think the key in this case is that what GCG was reviewing is that they're improving the situation that exists currently. So it could be as-is, or what they're proposing is actually improving the conditions that are on the site currently.
Jim?
So I'm thinking back to the conservation commission hearing you had. And can you review for us what, what they, what they reviewed and approved? And how it, and how it relates, if at all, to the, these stormwater questions?
Yeah, so the conservation commission reviewed the plan that is before the, the board right now, minus the vegetated filter strip. That was not part of the plan that the conservation commission reviewed. And I will be speaking with Olivia, the conservation agent, tomorrow to address that. As I said, the actual work proposed in the area, you know, with this vegetated filter strip, is very similar to what the commission approved. It's just a minor regrading. Other than that, you know, physically, it'll be exactly as we had permitted with the conservation commission. But just need to make sure that's okay. And whatever we need to do to, to write things with the commission as it relates to the approval, we'll do. In any case, what the commission looked at is that site plan, which included the infiltration trench. It included our, our narrative, which talked about the reduction in impervious surface. It included the removal of the gravel area, which was, was important to the commission to see that. So that, that is what they looked at. They looked at the whole site. They also did not require calculations because, you know, we're removing impervious, we're removing gravel. The rate is certainly going to be reduced. So they looked, we did submit the stormwater report to them, and, and they did look at that. So they viewed it through the lens of the Wellness Protection Act regs, and they agreed that, you know, this is redevelopment. Like I said, redevelopment for the state is different than the, the town's rules. We're reducing impervious, so it is redevelopment with the state. But they did look at the stormwater report and approve it as submitted to the board in December.
Thanks.
Alyssa, we'd love to hear from you.
Thanks. So I am very happy that the applicant is willing to make some improvements to the quality of the stormwater runoff, as suggested by GCG. And I'm also comfortable with GCG's conclusion that they're recommending that we go ahead and grant this waiver. I, I don't know whether or not the architect is here, or whether Paul can answer any questions about the windows on the right side. Because unless there was some practical reason to not include the additional windows on the right as well as the left side, I'd like to condition the permit on, on going ahead and complying with those recommendations from DRB. But there, there may be, you know, some feature inside the building that prevented the installation of a, of an additional window on that right side.
The architect is not here. It's just me. I have a limited ability to speak to the, the architecture of the building. However, I did upload a revised set of architectural plans to the, the open portal this afternoon that I believe addresses the, the, the comments on windows. The only change related to the windows on both sides, as I recall, there are, there are more windows, and I think they're the same, but I don't know if we can pull it up. I mean, I think that it would be appropriate, you know, should the, the board be inclined to approve this application, to condition that, you know, Peter or somebody from DRB should take a look and confirm that's what they were looking for. But we, we did submit a plan. I don't think there's anything architecturally that, you know, inside the building that prevents meeting the, the comments made by the DRB.
Okay. I saw the updated plan for the site and the vegetated strip. I didn't see an updated architectural plan.
Yeah, apologies, board. It was not uploaded.
Yeah, we, I submitted that quite late. Sorry about that. When I received the plans, I said, what changed? Because it's like in the middle of the plan set, and it's windows. I look at foundation plans. I'm the site guy, so.
So, quick question. As far as the windows, we're talking about the mix space, the mixed-use space.
Yeah, the mixed-use space.
So I was just trying to figure out, should we wait for a vote? I don't know. David? Yeah, no, 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 you can.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Madam Chair. So I, I think tonight, we can close the public hearing and then ask Kayla to prepare conditions that includes that condition.
Yep, that sounds great.
And if she has something between our next, our follow-up, or we approve this, if she has something that she wants to bring to light, she can bring to light at that time.
That sounds good.
I, I think that's, that's appropriate, because it seems that, that will be a condition anyway, because Peter would still need to review it.
Yeah.
So in that case, Madam Chair, and since no one else is wanting to talk, I move to close the public hearing.
I didn't mean to shut off discussion. Are we moving forward? Yeah, great. Sounds good. Yes.
Someone has a second.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Alyssa Nickel votes aye. Mr. Snyder Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Arsenault?
Aye.
David?
So I, I don't think we need a, a vote here. We can just ask the senior town planner to create a list of conditions
Yes.
that she thinks is, you know, appropriate based on our discussion and including the windows.
Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you, Kayla.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Onto our, our second public hearing. 7:15, grant of location, N-Star Electric Company DBA EverSource Energy for Conduit and Manhole Installation at 362 Main Street. The Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on February 3rd, 2025, at 7:15 PM in Acton Town Hall, Room 204, 472 Main Street, and remotely by video conference and call-in on the application of N-Star Electric Company. DBA as EverSource Energy for a grant of location to install approximately 55 feet, pardon me, of conduit at pole 31/130 for service to 362 Main Street. From a computer, enter in the link ID, actonmass.gov/meeting/selectboard, or from a telephone, dial 646-876-9923, and enter in the webinar ID 503-918-785. Telephone users may dial *9 to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raised hand feature to request to speak. And we should be hearing from Christine Crosby.
There's someone online with their hand up.
Is that you, Christine? Is it phone number 6564? Yes.
Hello, this is Christine Crosby from EverSource.
Welcome.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you could hear me. Yes, we're requesting a grant of location for approximately 55 feet of conduit at pole 31 over 130 Main Street in Acton. And the purpose of that would be to provide electric service to 362 Main Street, which is for the town of Acton Senior Housing.
Thank you, Christine. Do I hear a motion? Oh, is there a public comment? Hearing none? David?
Madam Chair, I, I move to approve the grant of location to N-Star Electric Company DBA EverSource Energy to install approximately 55 feet of conduit in a manhole at 362 Main Street to service the Acton Housing Authority project.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I believe you have to close the public hearing first.
Oh, he's absolutely right.
Yeah.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Nickel, aye. Mr. Snyder Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Arsenault?
Aye.
David?
I suppose I just can't say what I said before. But anyway, I, I move to approve grant of location to N-Star Electric Company DBA EverSource Energy to install about 55 feet of conduit in a manhole at 362 Main Street to service the Acton Housing Authority project.
Second.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Nickel, it's aye. Mr. Snyder Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Arsenault?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Let's get this done.
Yes.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine. On, on to hearing number three. The Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on February 3rd, 2025, at 7:20 PM, continued from January 27th, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 204 at the town, at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, and virtually www actuonmass.gov/meeting/selectboard on the application of Travis Minor for a U-S special permit under zoning bylaw, Section 3.4.11, and 10.3 at 268 Main Street. MAP F3 parcel 86-1. Application materials and how to participate remotely are available online and at Acton Town Hall. Hi, welcome. And we look forward to your updates, if you have any.
All right, I do have a few quick updates. So let's see, this morning, we were scheduled to meet with Matt from the Water Department to walk the grounds, make sure that we had a clear understanding of the scope of work that needed to be done, so that we knew that the excavator being contracted for the job was on the same page as the Water Commissioner, that would meet their needs. Unfortunately, Matt was sick today, so we were able to meet with another rep from the Water Department who had already met and talked with the excavator. But, and I've sent an email to Matt asking him to confirm that if these two key steps are taken, that the water line that connects, I believe, from Redstone Apartments water line to 268, that that will be disconnected outside of the building. There may be a switch that they'll, they'll just be able to shut it off. If not, they may need to cut the line. And then a separate line will be installed running from the curb to 268. That will be a separate water service. I believe, right now, once that was confirmed, that we're waiting on a final estimate from the excavator, who said that we can expect this job to be done by April 30th at the latest, hopefully sooner, but dependent on the weather.
That sounds promising.
We're hoping so.
Yeah. Do we have any other questions, or? David?
So I, I know we talked about, you know, the, the condition last time. I, I don't know whether, this is not one of the things that they discussed with council, but I would be comfortable approving this on the condition that there is a, a contract with an excavator to install the, the water line. I don't know how the board members feel. I would allow them to move forward. You know, I think we probably could come up with some wording for, for that. Anyway, I think, rather than make them wait until April 30th.
Yeah. Any, Alyssa?
This is, this is good news. I remember that the applicant was hoping to open the businesses this month, February. And so if the separate water meter is not available until, you know, two or three months from now, I'm wondering if there's any chance that there can be a contract between the new owner and the condominium association for the, for the, for the applicant to take on any water and sewer usage that's that's billed to the condo in, in the meantime. I, I understand that the former agreement was a handshake agreement, and look how that turned out. So I'm just wondering if there's any sort of written agreement to pay the bills for, say, you know, February, March, and April, if it takes that long? Because depending on the number of clients that come in, there may be a sufficient water usage at 268 to make it worthwhile.
I'm, I'm amenable to an agreement. I think the, the challenge would be identifying what that water usage actually is in the absence of a meter.
That's, that's correct. I think that we had heard before that the leak was detected because of an increase in usage over what the condo was, was seen as an average. So I don't know if, if you would be comfortable looking at the average of what they, what they typically use during those months, February, March, and April? And if it goes, you know, whatever, 100 gallons, 200 gallons more, then it's likely attributed to the operations in 268 coming online before there's a separate water meter.
In theory, it's something that I'm open to. I have, I have concerns, given my dealings thus far with the people we'd be contracting with, about the information that they have available and how we would be fairly tracking our water usage. So I would, in the abstract, yes, but I would need more information before I signed anything.
Oh, sure, absolutely. I'm just wondering if the water district might be able to help out with tracking usage.
David?
I, I don't know. For me, that's a very complicated thing to do for three months. I mean, the situation has already previously existed for, forever, I guess, and it's not the, the fault of this new owner. And the, the, the new building is just going to have, you know, a, a bathroom. You know, people aren't going to be showering, or cooking, or doing dishes, or laundry there. The water use is relatively low. You know, we, I think, you know, this is something we didn't have to be involved in, but we are getting involved in to make sure that the situation gets resolved. I think that's a good thing. But, you know, I think coming to agreement between everybody as to what that is, is, is a lot to ask. Anyway, I, I, I think that if, you know, the, if there's, we're able to show a contract with a date certain, that, that would be enough for me.
Okay.
Can't wait till the hearing's closed to have opinions. I, I don't have any more questions.
Oh, yeah, if you'd like to come to a microphone? Yeah. Yep.
Good evening. Is this on? Yeah. My name is Alex Power. I'm trustee of 268 Main Street Realty Trust, which owns the building. So, just to give a little bit more of an update, and I provided a copy of an email from Ernie's Excavation that I got today, along with a letter committing to do the work by April 30 of this year. Obviously, the weather conditions right now, ground conditions, don't permit. He thinks he could do it in March, but to be safe, he'd like to have outside date of April 30. So, that's the first thing. We did, I actually reviewed the tape of your hearing last week, because we were just confused as to what the issues were. So, I did try to get you a proposal, a contract, from Ernie's Excavating. He just wasn't able to do it today, as you heard earlier. The meeting was this morning, and he was out plowing and whatever during the day. So, it's promised to me, I probably shouldn't speak for other people, but it's promised to me by tomorrow, and we would expect to be able to submit a written signed proposal to the Select Board, if not tomorrow, by the end of this week. Obviously, we have our arrangement with Travis to deal with that, but the concept of submitting a contract to the Select Board to do the work should not be a problem. And I think it's an appropriate condition for the permit. Again, it's not my permit. I probably shouldn't speak for Travis. We don't think, you know, that's a problem. I would just, you know, given what I saw of the meeting last, you know, your last meeting on the tape, I do want to assure the board, we haven't been, you know, just sitting back and not paying attention. This issue was brought to our attention on January 17, as late as last week, both based on, you know, independent investigation by our plumber and Redstone's plumber. The common understanding, ours and Redstone's, was that our line went from the street into our building, and then there was a takeoff from our building, inside our building, to Redstone. The meeting today, the Water District seems to have a different view. Whatever it is, we will take care of it.
Thank you.
Seeing no one wishing to speak, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Nickel? Ms. Nickel votes aye. Mr. Snyder-Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And Ms. Arsenault?
Aye. It's nice that there's an end date. And I don't see a way to figure out who is using water, you know. Jim?
This is a matter that it's going to, apparently, from last week's testimony, it's going to end up in small claims court. So, keeping us out of it seems entirely appropriate. I think our interest is in, you know, in making sure that the plumbing gets fixed. And I'm happy with either the original condition in the, in the planning department's memo, the condition approval on 268 Main Street, having independent water service within six months of the used special permit being filed with the town clerk, or the alternate condition that David mentioned, that the applicant seems okay with, about having a signed contract with a date in it. I mean, I'm slightly more inclined to have the language that's already been written by the planning department, but if they're okay with the alternate, I'm fine with it, too.
David?
Last time, Alyssa was a little concerned about the six-month thing because of verifying at the end. So, I think if we had required a signed contract at the beginning, that solves that problem.
I think that's an acceptable condition. We would just probably condition it prior to opening, which it seems like that wouldn't be an issue.
Prior to opening, oh.
The contract in place.
Yep. Great. David?
Can I just understand, Kayla, that the planning department received the signed contract before opening?
Yes.
Got it.
Alyssa, do you have a question?
No, that seems like a really good compromise. And I'm very excited that Open Door is doing so well, that they are opening a second location. And I really hope that the water issue from the past gets sorted out between the two parties as quickly and painlessly as possible.
Great. David?
Or three parties. I don't know how many parties there are.
I'm prepared with a motion, if you'd like one, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I move to approve the, well, I move to find that this used plan is consistent with the master plan, is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it takes place, and is appropriate for the site in question. I move to approve the used special permit, number 09/24/2024-503, at 268 Main Street, conditioned on the submittal to the planning department of a signed contract to install independent water service before the business opens.
Second?
Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Nickel, it's aye. Mr. Snyder-Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And Ms. Arsenault?
Aye. Thank you.
It's unfortunate that the dog has left.
I know. I got a picture. On to new and special business, and we are excited to hear an update on the Acton Community Dog Park project.
Good evening. Thank you for having a quick update from all of us. Any update on this project would not be complete without thanking the Assistant Town Manager for getting us over the goal line. And yes, so funding has all been figured out. I have some details on that if you want. We have sent out a bid, and as you know, was awarded for the construction of the dog park. The numbers are all in place and looking doable with the various grants, et cetera, that were applied. Coordination with some of the mass DOT requirements for around that site are in good place, thanks to the great work of the Engineering Department. The committee is busy finishing up our choice and actually proceeding ahead to getting some of the furnished by other items, purchased either through the town, et cetera, things that would have only added to the cost if they had gone through the contract, et cetera. And so, I think we're in really good shape with a good timing for the sewer extension project sort of progressing and wrapping up, and then coordinating with that. And next big milestone will be a coordination kickoff meeting with some of those folks involved and with the contractor involved. So, this is really exciting. We're very glad. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Thank you.
All right. And I wonder if I could ask for a photo opportunity with the Select Board and a few of the committee member meetings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We can definitely do that. Now, yeah. Do we have to officially do that?
I suggest we stand under Alyssa's picture.
Alyssa, yeah, yeah. That was a good idea.
Thank you for indulging us in that.
Oh, nice. Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, we have actually received the Stanton funds and then the previous CPC and CPA award. And like we said, that really did push us over the finish line, the goal line here. So, thank you.
Thank you. And on to number seven, discuss fire station deployment pilot program, starting February 10, 2025.
Thank you. I just wanted to take an opportunity just to remind the board and the public that, as presented in the January meeting and as we published in a release or two, the fire department's engaging in a pilot program to look at alternative ways to provide responses to the community. The pilot program is going to start February 10, which is next week. The, as part of this pilot project, just to remind folks, we're going to be consolidating all the personnel and the apparatus into two stations instead of operating out of four stations like we currently do. The two stations that will have the consolidated staffing are the North Station, Station 4, on Harris Street, and the South Station, which is called Station 2, on School Street. The town will be split up into equally sized districts that each of those stations will serve, will have an ambulance and appropriate firefighting apparatus out of each of those stations, and we will watch and see how it goes. We think it's a good idea. We think it'll allow more people to get on the scene more quickly. And we're going to be taking some metrics and reviewing to make sure that we understand how this changed operations. We've hired a consultant to do that with us. They have already started the work that they're doing. The first thing they did was an internal survey, because one of the reasons that we're doing this, it's not just for improving the way we respond to the community, but it's also we're trying to improve the way the department operates internally and help with morale and other things that have been suffering a little bit due to the people being so spread out. So, we did an internal survey. I haven't seen the results, but we'll do another one later on in the pilot program to see how that's changed. We'll continue to update the public like we're doing tonight, and we'll do some sort of outreach survey and make sure that people know how to contact us if they have comments or questions. I think one thing that I always want to make sure people understand is that if you live near a station that's scheduled to be unstaffed, which would be Station 1, which is over here in the center, or Station 3, which is in West Acton, those stations will have a sign on them that says, you know, if someone walks up to it, there'll be a sign that says, "The station is currently unstaffed." If you have an emergency, dial 911, or push this button. There'll be a button that connects to dispatch. So, ideally, you know, that wouldn't happen, but just so people have that, just to allay that concern that some people may have. And then we'll continue to monitor how it goes, and we will be back in touch with the board. If you have feedback, either as board members or constituents that you hear, I would love to hear from it. If members of the public have questions or comments or concerns, Fire Chief Anita Arnim and I would very much like to hear from you. And it starts on the 10th, and we'll see any changes that we want to announce along the way. We'll do that here and also on our website. We are doing another newsflash and press release at the end of this week, just to remind people about it. So, any questions or concerns?
Jim?
I've forgotten how long this initial pilot is for.
We're looking to do it about three months, three to four months. We want to, we don't want to do it in June, or we'd like, we think, we want to try to finish it before June. So, sometime in that timeframe.
David?
Oh, just to say that the two times I've talked about this to people who live in West Acton and explained the advantages of the plan, people really get it. They really, they really understand that, you know, a full response to a fire requires, you know, a complete crew, possibly a large crew, depending on the size of the fire, and having people, you know, having the fighters consolidated in one station where they can just show up feels like a big win.
David?
Yes, John, I missed at the beginning of what you said. When is it actually starting?
February 10.
Thank you.
Alyssa?
Thanks for the update, John. Are we ready, or are you ready, rather, to share any information on response times? Or will that come later as part of the public outreach that the consultant is going to be doing? Because I haven't heard any concerns other than how does this impact response times? Because that was certainly a feature of the plans to create a station in North Acton.
We can share that, I don't have anything to share tonight, but I think generally, as mentioned earlier, I think response times for first do is different than response times for what you need to manage the scene. And so, we do have data on that, and we think that both currently and in the pilot, we will be within appropriate ranges of time for, certainly for complete response, and we'll continue to manage that. And if we identify ways to, if we identify things that we need to change, we will do so. That's why the benefit of doing it as a pilot is it's temporary, and we can really see how it's going. And if after six weeks, we say, you know what, let's pull this back, we can do that. I mean, I think we want to try it out. We think it makes sense to try it out, but if we really are having trouble with it, we can certainly change it and maybe a different model in the future, and we'll do a similar outreach to do that. But if you're looking for specific data on specific response times, I can provide that, just not tonight.
Okay, thanks. It might be worth reminding people that we did have sort of a pilot program when, I think it was the showers were not functioning in the center station, so we did have about a month of our firefighters consolidated in three rather than four stations. And I don't think if people weren't listening to the Select Board meeting to hear that, they probably didn't notice.
Thanks for the update, John. And on to eight, discuss the draft leaf blower bylaw updates. Do we have any residents? Oh, I guess I'm getting out of turn. David?
So, if you think it's a good idea, Madam Chair, I was just going to go over the changes that I made to this draft, just so members know what I did. I changed the final end date from 2031 to 2030. I clarified that the warning text, so that a repeated warning didn't allow a repeated, or did not lengthen the date of, you know, being immune from another penalty. There might be some redundancy in that sentence now, and I could wordsmith that better. I use the Public Works Director title consistently through the document for, I clarified a couple places of small commercial leaf blower operators instead of other, and I clarified that there was two workers instead of two employees. And I, and the document was inconsistent in a couple of places regarding whether municipalities were covered or not, and I made those consistent through the document. I have contacted council but was not yet able to verify... I have contacted council, but was not yet able to verify whether we could impose this bylaw on another municipal entity like the school district or water district. But I, you know, if we decide to move forward with that, I will be, you know, forward with this whenever we decide to do that. I'll be reviewing the whole thing with council. And we'll cover the wording there with her on, you know, whether we can impose our bylaw on another municipal entity. So that's the extent of the changes since the last draft.
Thank you. Jim?
So as the board recalls, we got letters and some testimony from Deborah Symes and from Paul Campus. And in a little bit of a scramble today, I attempted to consolidate their suggested edits into a single document. I'm not quite, I don't think it's quite ready for, well, I'd be happy to go through those changes if the chair would like, so that we could discuss them and decide if we'd like to move on them. Okay. The, as you may recall, the changes from Deborah were of two types. There were some copy edits, you know, adding a comma, subtracting a comma, you know, removing the word "and" in some places, making tenses match. So I'm not going to review all those. I think those are the kind of minor changes that the board, you know, might just want to have, you know, David look over and consolidate if they make sense. The first substantial proposed change was actually an idea from me that now I'm not sure about, which was, you may recall that in the definition section, section two, the same clause is used over and over again to define all the different kinds of leaf blowers. I attempted to remove that redundancy with a proposed edit, but I think that's now, after some conversation with David, I think that's the kind of technical change that should only be done, you know, with a lawyer looking at it. Because I wouldn't want to, you know, screw up these definitions. So I think they're fine the way they are. They just seem like they have a lot of extra words, and I would appreciate the town council commenting on that. What next? The main change that I think is going to need some discussion is the dates. So as you may recall, Paul Campus looked at the dates of a few of our neighboring towns and noticed that a typical transition period was more like three and a half years instead of four and a half years. So he suggested bringing the dates back in a bit so that the, for example, the total prohibition would start happening in September 15 of 2029 instead of January 1st of 2030. The spring and fall cleanup would end, oh no, it's the same, 2029. The prohibition by property owners and small commercial leaf blower operators, setting aside the fall and spring cleanup, would change to September 15, 2029. I must be reading this wrong. 2027. And then the, and the initial use of gas-powered leaf blowers would be by the commercial leaf blower operators would happen June 1st, 2026 instead of January 1st, 2027. So it's pulling things back by about six months. Since I wrote that, I also saw, I also noticed that in conversations with David that the other towns that Paul was comparing to were towns with noise ordinances already in place so that it was a more natural, rapid transition. So, you know, these may or may not make sense for Acton, but I think it's worth discussing. You know, the sooner we get the leaf blowers stopped, the sooner we're, you know, protecting the health of the operators, the sooner we're protecting the ears of our residents, and, you know, the sooner we're reducing the bit of greenhouse gases that are going out. So that might be a great point of conversation among us to see where, if and where we would like to change the dates.
David?
So I think, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, there were two main changes to the date. One was to move the winter or fall cleanup period up by, from December to the middle of November.
Yeah, that was a suggestion from Deborah. I didn't mention it because it didn't resonate with me as much. But you're right, to complete the picture, I should also note that there was a suggestion to change the cleanup dates, fall cleanup date from December 31st back to November 15th.
Okay, so it sounds like you're not advocating for that one.
No, I think, just to do the pro and con, I think what you suggested to me was that there are homeowners, including some right on our select board, who wait until after Thanksgiving to, you know, do the leaf cleanup. And especially if you have oak trees, this is what I noticed, oak trees just keep dropping their leaves. They hang on to them for a really long time, and you often have to, you know, go in there with the cleanup in December.
Yes, I think just two fifths of the select board did their leaves in December.
I use a rake.
I didn't use a leaf blower in December either, but I think, you know, someone who wants to do their leaves in December. And, I mean, to me, that's the same. So, and the other, if I'm characterizing it correctly, brings the end date, the final end date in by a year. Is that right? The other?
Just a few months, September 15, 2029, instead of your, well, your proposal was January 1st, 2030, which is just three months later. The original version was, yes, was 2031, so.
So the difference there in that proposal is that the final year has no fall cleanup period?
Right.
I'm indifferent to that, but I will say that throughout all the discussions we've had, starting now more than a year ago on this, we've, the board has been trying to work between those folks who would either like no bylaw or an extremely long time to convert, and those that would like the bylaw like tomorrow with, you know, and with a punitive fine structure so that they, you know, people would convert right away. We tried to go kind of in between, and so, you know, I don't object to bringing it into, before that last, if that's, you know, to bring the final date rather than January 1st, 2030 to be the same as the fall cleanup period.
Yep, that sounds good. Alyssa, do you have anything to add?
I am in favor of bringing it in as far, as close to now as everybody else is comfortable with. And, you know, Jim, you mentioned the noise bothering our ears, but I just want to once again point out that the noise pollution has significant health benefits that include, you know, heart disease, high blood pressure, heart disease, early death. So it's not just that it's irritating, it's that it's shortening our lives. And I guess another thing that I wanted to say was what Paul wrote to us in his email about creating something that we think is politically more palatable and more likely to pass isn't necessarily going to serve us well, because amendments can always be made on town meeting floor, as happened in Lexington and Concord. So I think that the board should do what they think is in the best interest of public health and the environment health, and then see how town meeting receives it. I mean, we had, well, this was before I was on the board, so I shouldn't say "we," but the gun, actually, maybe I was on the board, the gun shop bylaw, there was an amendment made from town meeting floor to have zero gun shops. So you never know what people are going to be amenable to.
I completely understand that. I'll just say a couple of things again. Again, I think if we have a bylaw that tries to take a moderate approach to this, and from the very beginning, we talked about the bylaw being kind of heavy-handed encouragement, I think there'll be fewer amendments on the town hall floor. And, you know, each amendment's probably going to take at least a half an hour. Last time, there were four, right? That's a couple of hours, probably. So I think to the extent that we can read what townspeople want, you know, and come up with as close to that as possible in the beginning, I think that's important. I'll also say that, you know, I'm pretty comfortable bringing the final end date into that September 15th date, if that's what everybody wants here. But more date changes than that, I would rather come back at a time when Dean was here, since I think he was the strongest voice for having the date out the furthest. So, and I don't want to, you know, cut him out of that discussion. But I don't, you know, that final date change by three and a half months or whatever it is, I don't think that's a big deal. If we agree on that as a date change, and that is the extent of the changes we make today, then I would ask at the end that we have a motion that allows me to make that change, any copy edit changes that come up, and then I run it by town council and bring it back to the board with a motion, maybe in consent, depending on what the chair wants, to have it added to the warrant for this year. If we feel like we were not agreed on the details yet, then I would do one more draft and then bring it back for another, another meeting to discuss that draft.
Jim?
David, I think you said that you wanted to wait for Dean to come back or be part of the discussion before we talked about changing the intermediate dates?
Yes, I'm not even sure. I'm in favor of changing the intermediate dates. So, you know, it would take, the beginning would take effect six months after the law was passed at this year's town. Right? Because the edits that you gave me, we would pass this in May 2025. Would it take effect in 2026? From the very beginning of our discussions, we talked about having people have a year's or so notice to be able to deal with the changes. So, yes, I would not want to make that change without Dean. I am comfortable making the last change just to September 15th, 2029, from January 1st, 2030.
Okay, I'm happy to wait on that, because I would like to argue for an earlier dates. And I'm fine with the notion of waiting to talk about that. But I'm still fine, I don't think the dates are going to make a difference in what you hear from town council. So I'm still fine with the notion that, except for one more change that I want to talk about, I'm fine with you making, you know, little copy edit type changes and getting it to town council in case there, because who knows, town council might require some, you know, rearrangement that we need to talk about again anyway.
Sure, I can do that.
Okay. Could I mention the other issue that has come up is the, let's see, I know I can find this. Oh, yeah. We, in Section 3E, we talk about the, that the prohibition doesn't apply to the use of wheeled, walk-behind, four-stroke leaf blowers, and nor to leaf blowing devices attached to tractors and/or mowers. What we used to have was limiting that exception to lots larger than one acre. And the reason for that was because these devices are very powerful, very loud, and it's particularly challenging to people's ears to have those in a densely packed residential area. They're really, they're much more powerful than the backpack blowers that we're used to, and correspondingly louder. So I was going to propose we bring back the, that says that the prohibition shall not apply, and then add the clause on lots larger than one acre during the spring and fall cleanup periods. I wonder, David, what, you know, where are you going back and forth on whether to have that one acre limit or not?
David?
I have mixed feelings on that, you know. I don't have a tractor, just to say, but I have three quarters of an acre. If I had a tractor, you're saying I couldn't use it on my lot, you know, a tractor with a leaf blower? And you're saying I couldn't use it on my lot? I don't know. You know, some of the comments that we heard was to reduce the complexity. This adds one more level of complexity here. I don't think this is that common, you know, it's a trade-off. I'd like to hear Dean's input on that as well. To me, that's not a slam dunk. And also, those have a much different kind of noise to my ear, right? They're not the shrill, two-cycle noise. And the airports on, you know, the output ports for the air on the blowers are very loud, and they don't have the same rush sound, you know. They move a larger volume of slower-moving air than the... I could be persuaded either. I would go with, you know, the sense of the board. But I think, you know, we should have Dean here for that, if we decide to move forward to that. So if it is the sense of the board, Madam Chair, I'm happy to do the copy edit drafts, change that final end date, run it by town council, and bring it back to the board.
That sounds good. Yep. Alyssa, do you have anything else to add?
Nope. There is somebody with their hand up.
Oh, thank you. Online caller?
Hi, this is Tara from APR Math Ave, and I agree with David on the complexity of adding the acre or whatever the measurement is. I also feel like it's pretty elitist, that people that can afford lots of land, and I don't know if New View falls in that category, then they can use these things, and then people in smaller places can't. I understand the density thing, but it seems like it should be one or all. I mean, you know, everybody or nobody. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we moving on to discuss annual town meeting?
Yeah, the point of order, Madam Chair, was I will propose moving item 10 after item 13.
Great, thank you.
But this is not yet. We're doing item nine now.
Sorry.
Well, I just, this is on the agenda in case there's anything the board wants to check in on as a related town meeting. I was hoping to have an article list for you tonight, which I do not have. But you can imagine what most of the articles are, the ones that we normally would have. There are a few zoning articles that the planning staff and the planning board are working on, but I think you're mostly aware of those. We'll start to get that together then, I guess, for your next meeting or provide it in the interim, in the form of a list. The board voted last week to open the warrant for petitions, I believe, as of... Yeah, you want to take over? Sorry.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So as John was saying, that the board voted to open the warrant February 10th. That is a week from today. We also made edits to the calendar based off of the last meeting, which included this Saturday's budget workshop that'll be hosted by the school committee. And then the board voted to close the warrant on Monday, March 21st at 5:00 PM. One follow-up to a question that was asked was the deadline to obtain nomination papers by 7:30. We checked with the town clerk and discussed it, and there wasn't really a guidance. and there wasn't really a guidance, either from the state or local guidance, on a duration. So after doing a little bit of math, he extended it. We discussed putting it to Tuesday, March 11th at 7:30 p.m. From there, everything else remained the same. And the calendar is ready to be posted. If the board has any other edits, we can add those to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
Was the calendar in the packet? I didn't see it in the packet.
It is not in the packet, but we can drop it in.
Yeah, I'm happy with it. Where will you put the updated calendar for everybody to look at? On the town meeting page? Or where will you put that? Because, I mean, you could put it...
It's usually something that we just keep in the mix provided the select board and the finance committee, but putting on the town meeting webpage is a good idea.
I mean, people have asked me, when is the deadline to both papers? And it's nice to be able to, you know, somewhere on the town clerk's page makes sense to me. So, thank you. And then the, it would be great if on, Madam Chair, if on the agenda next time, we had article assignments. If the manager can have a article list available for our next meeting, we could go through the assignments.
Sounds great.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do want to point out one thing that David brought up, a very good point about having the calendar for the deadline to obtain nomination papers on the town clerk's website. He has posted that on his website with the updated information based off of the conversation and the information we provided you too. So if anybody's looking for it, if they go to the town clerk's page, there's an elections tab on the left-hand side. They can click that and see the calendar option on that page.
Thank you for saying that. There's so much information on the town website. You just have to go there. So, number 10.
Madam Chair, that's the one I would propose that we take after Item 13.
Great. Thank you. Number 11, discuss Department of Public Works facility building project.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as a quick update, while Dean is unfortunately not here with us, I'm happy to provide one on behalf of the DPW Building Committee. The Building Committee held a meeting last week at the Council on Aging. Pretty well-attended. We had a couple of select board members in attendance too, so thank you. A couple of big things that were discussed. Weston and Sampson, who is the project designer, provided an update of the fleet inventory layout inside of the garage. And one of the questions that have come up was the size of the garage. The number seems large. Is that sufficient or is that overdesigned? And the designer took the full inventory list of all equipment. That's trucks, tractors, every piece of equipment that we have inside by DPW. And they worked out a plan inside of the garage that shows storage and location of all pieces of equipment inside of that garage. This doesn't include plows. This doesn't include other machines or equipment that's attached to the pieces of equipment. It's all the trucks. And the layout is posted on the project site, but it did show that this design in the 24,000-square-foot garage is designed with all of those pieces of equipment in mind. So it's perfectly designed for it. Another thing that was presented for the first time was a energy modeling scenario and a study. And there were three different modeling systems that were analyzed. Base system, which was a natural gas condensing boilers and water heater, air source heat pumps, and ground source heat pumps. And the information was very helpful. The savings, of course, are pretty significant with air source heating pumps and ground source heating pumps. And what it did show is the natural gas condensing and water heater doesn't provide much savings to the town at all, especially compared with the other two. The information is in a slide deck, and that's also on the DPW project site. And we'd be happy to share those links with you as well. The next meeting has been scheduled for February 12th. At that meeting, we'll be discussing progress on design development. Weston and Sampson will be moving forward with 40% efforts that will result in another cost estimate. We identified the need to have the next cost estimate submitted to the town by March 11th to allow enough time to be able to start informational steps for residents, educating people on what the project's estimated updated cost is. So it's a little bit of work on their end, but we're confident that they can get there. So at the February 12th meeting, it's our intent to be updated by Weston and Sampson on design to date and also the progress that they've made on that design development towards a cost estimate. So from that point, we should have a pretty good idea whether or not the March 11th date will be doable. And that'll be held in this room at 7:00 p.m. as well and held over Zoom. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Well, I was thinking about the Friday night meeting that we had with FinCom. And I'm, it made me take a step back because I know that we have a responsibility for getting a usable upgrade for the DPW building. I mean, everybody in the room agreed that the current building isn't sufficient. And I'm concerned now that the, that the FinCom's general reaction to the project is going to be reflected enough in the larger public that in its current form, I'm concerned it won't get successfully through the vote at the ballot box and then the vote at town meeting. And I think that would be really bad. I would, if there's a way of adjusting the project, then I'd be open to us discussing this. But I have been less involved in the details, so this may not be realistic. I do know that any change at this point would presumably throw the schedule off. So we'd already be dealing with the extra cost of delaying and the extra cost of some redesign. So it's not clear to me that there's any change in design that would make up for those things. But on the other hand, waiting might give us just simply more time. Like, I remember with the override vote, there was a, the operating override vote, there was, you know, a large group effort to convince people. And we are having, you know, meetings, you know, like at the COA and, you know, and other places. But it's, you know, it's maybe 10% of the scale of what happened with the override. And that, of course, as we know, that was, you know, down to those last 40 votes or so. Of the various ideas that were expressed by the FinCom, the only one that stayed with me was the idea about office space elsewhere. The notion that building new office space is a losing proposition. It's so expensive and there is an excess of office space in the general, you know, in the Acton area, certainly. So I didn't know if there was any way of separating out the, you know, the vehicle, storage, and maintenance parts from the office parts in a way that would save enough money to have it be worth the, you know, the delay in time to fix the problem and the higher cost of delaying because of, both because of the inflation and because of the redesign that would be needed. So I wish Dean were here to talk me down. But, you know, maybe the rest of you have some thoughts about this, whether this is worth considering or not.
I'll talk you down just a little bit. I'm hoping for maybe not needing so many geothermal wells. Keeping my fingers crossed. I'm a white knuckler half the time. But I, there's something to be said about departments being together. I think that is important. I remember, was town hall getting renovated? Or we had to switch the land department to NAGOG? And it was just so bizarre to have them separated so far or in a different office space. I mean, our highway department belongs down there. That's my opinion. It's an opinion. And I think it's important to keep departments together as, you know, a rule.
I would just say that we're, right now, working on ways to improve department morale in the fire department because of supervision not being provided where the staff are. And there are different departments with different operations and different needs. But I think the theme is here is that, you know, you could say, why don't we just move administration for DPW over to this building? And I don't know that we have room in here for that. But I think even if we did, I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of it because I think having the DPW administration there is an important part of that operation being successful. And, I mean, the people that we have, I think, could do a good job from wherever they are. But I know that having them there is important, and we've seen it.
Thank you. David?
Hi, several things. First, the meeting on Friday was interesting. Some were concerned going into that meeting that the FinCom and the select board were talking past each other. I think that's definitely not the case, given the results of that meeting. I think that both groups correctly perceived the opinion of the other group. It's just that we don't agree, right? So there was some concern that we were missing something. And I, we, the moderator had us describe the other group's opinion, and each group described the other group's opinion. I think we were, I mean, there were slight differences. But for the most part, I think people were right on. But that's not to say that the finance committee and the select board are close on the, you know, the final outcome. I will say that for the, I am definitely in favor of bringing the project up for vote this year. And the main reason for that for me is after we had the study committee, which recommended a building of this scope, we then asked town meeting for $1.2 million. Town meeting graciously gave us $1.2 million to design this building. I could not imagine now going to town meeting and say, okay, we just wasted all your money. We're going to design a different scoped building. And that's not what they signed up, I mean, the town meeting saw the results of the study committee. And the study committee, you know, had two members of FinCom on that committee, plus a lot of other people. Then for the town meeting vote for the design money, it was supported by super majorities of the select board and finance committee and, most importantly, town meeting itself. And so I think we almost have an obligation now to bring them back. I mean, if town meeting wants to tell us no, that's their prerogative. And that has happened occasionally on other projects. It happened for the police station and the North Acton Fire Station. But I also say that, you know, I don't agree with separating out the office space. So, you know, some would say that this, the building is overbuilt. I don't think that's, that's not the case, in my opinion. It's an adequately sized building. There's no extra space in this building, right? But it does accommodate everything that we want to do, but not extra space for 10 years from now, right? So it doesn't have any more parking spaces for more vehicles we might have or anything like that. And so anything less than this is almost by definition an inadequate building. And again, I have a problem bringing to town meeting something that we don't think is going to do the job, right? We have to be able to say to, you know, if I'm, if I was, I think Dean will probably present the article, but if I was on presenting the article, I would want to be able to say with full faith that we think this is the right thing to do. And I agree with Fran and the town manager about having everyone together. And in addition to morale, there are very practical things for having the DPW director to be able to talk to the foreman and the members of the crews as to, you know, what they should be doing without having to run back and forth to two facilities. And for the crews to come back at the end of the day and talk to the town engineers and say, we were trying to make this curve for the sidewalk, and, you know, it's not going to work. It's not going to clear the fire hydrant, or whatever it was. I don't know what the problem was. And they should be able to talk to the town engineer and get, you know, a resolution as to, you know, how to fix that. And finally, office space off-site is not free, right? You know, we could make a reasonable calculation. You know, I'm sure we could find office space in town in an empty storefront or, you know, something. There is definitely space available, but it's not free. And it would probably cost many tens of thousands of dollars a year, maybe $100,000 a year. You know, I don't know exactly. We don't have the, you know, a proposal in front of us. But, you know, you know, so you'd have to measure that huge reduction in efficiency and morale against the difference in cost between the debt service for that portion of the building and rent, which I think is not that much. It might be a little less, I agree. But, you know, I can't see going to town meeting with something that we think is wrong. You know, I think we have to agree on what we're presenting to town meeting. Again, if town meeting does not want that, that's up to the, you know, the voters. And I completely respect that. But I think that we have to go in with a recommendation that we believe.
I thought our Friday meeting was interesting, and I'm glad we did it because I agree with David in the sense that I think we just don't agree. And it is about cost or, you know, affordability. And I understand the, you know, taxpayers' position. But also, I think bringing this forward for a town municipal building is not unusual. The building's just depreciating, so I, Friday was eye-opening. And it came down to me as just the price, really, so.
We can take public comment after we're finished discussing. I don't know, Alyssa, if you have anything to add?
I'm not sure that I have anything terribly coherent to add. I did watch the recording today. I was a little surprised by the conversation about how the amount of the project has changed. And while I understand that, you know, if the initial estimate was lower than where we are now, because the cost estimate came in at $47 million, and we cut it back to $43 million now, we're hoping to bring it even lower, then it still is not a great place to be because we're higher than the initial estimate. But the initial estimate years ago was based on costs years ago. And every project that the town or the Acton Housing Authority or the Water District has put out to bid has come in much higher than the budgeted amount. And I'm going back even further, remembering that the original plan was to do both the public works facility and the transfer station reconfiguration. And the select board and the town, I don't know if the study committee looked at that as well, but the decision was made to just, just deal with the DPW facility right now and separate the transfer station. So it's already been a huge reduction in scope. And I also remember the initial estimate, I think it was $35 million. I don't know where that number came from. But Jim, I remember you saying, oh, it's too expensive, we can't do it. it's too expensive, we can't do it. Costs have escalated. So I don't, I don't think that, that there's any, um, anything that anyone's trying to pull off, you know? Like some people say, well, a developer will come in and propose, you know, 60 units for this development and then after there's an uproar from the butters, they'll come back and say, oh, how about only 40, even though that was the original plan? There's, there's nothing like that going on here. These are just the cost estimates that are reflective of, of inflation. And another thing that I'm a little confused on is the idea that no one is building spaces for staff anymore. Part, part of the reason for the inclusion of the female locker rooms is so that we can hire female employees for the DPW. So I don't know how we would do that without building those, those spaces. I mean, it is, it is appealing to think if you could just create a small building that's, that's healthy and safe for staff on site and, and just deal with the equipment spaces. But that doesn't really address the fact that you still need to build those new spaces, the new locker rooms and the conference room and the muster room. So it, I, I'm in agreement that it makes more sense and it's, and it's more responsible of the town and good stewardship of tax dollars to have one project that accomplishes both rather than, than trying to do it piecemeal or, or have staff off-site, some staff off-site and vehicles and mechanics on Forest Road. Like if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it, then we should do it correctly and, um, there's a lot of talk about how we needed to have these kinds of conversations a lot earlier, but we, we have been talking about this. We talked about it all through the discussion of the operating override, knowing that this was coming this year, you know, right on the heels of the operating override. And the, the reason is that there's a need, a dire need, you know? Somebody flippantly said, oh, you should call the Board of Health if there are these issues. So I'm so glad nobody's called OSHA about this facility. We need to take care of this as soon as possible. So there's a need and our, some of our debt has fallen off. And the cost of this project is just going to increase over time. If we're looking at FY '29, then we can count on a 15% higher cost. I guess the only thing that I'm worried about that gives me pause is what's happening in DC and worrying about, you know, what's going to be available for incentives for the, for the green elements of, of the project. And, and I know that that was discussed a little bit last week at the DPW Building Committee about how some, some like mass save incentives are not dependent on what's going on at the federal level. But I, I agree completely that we need to bring it to, to the Town Meeting voters. Well, first we need to bring it to the voters at the ballot and it would be irresponsible if we didn't. If we just, you know, hedged our bet on, on a, on a pessimistic political prediction of, of failure. Like I said, not much coherent, but that's what I have to add at this point.
Thank you, Alyssa. Jim?
This has been really helpful for me. I mean, deliberately, we didn't get into these kind of details at the Friday night meeting. It was more of a, you know, ground, ground level of, you know, making sure we actually heard each other. So it's reassuring to me that, you know, all, all of you are able and willing to, you know, stand up and defend the project as it's developing. That's, that's, because it's going to be important. The, the other thing that is helpful for me is knowing that unlike the operating override, which has a, a number staring the voters right at the face when they come into the voting booth, this, the way capital overrides are done, it doesn't have a number on the ballot. It says, you know, allow us to, you know, take on debt to build this, you know, project. And I think people will understand that the project's important. And as they start to understand the money, we have, we have good, we have good ways of responding about, you know, this is not going to hit your taxes this year, you know? This is, this is a, this is a big project that takes on debt that, you know, is paid off over many years. Yeah. Okay. Thanks for taking me off the cliff.
David?
It is a little bit disappointing that in the meeting on Friday that we didn't get into these things, right? It was, you know, someone described it as marriage counseling. And I guess it was kind of like that, but I would have preferred a debate where anybody could, you know, put their facts on the table and, and try to convince the others that their point of view was, was worth considering. And I think we would have gotten further, because I, one of the things that I said going into this meeting is we've been communicating back and forth through liaison reports and meeting minutes, you know? We, uh, we don't communicate, we haven't, I mean, people have off-site conversations, but, but there is not, has not been an official, you know, uh, you know, kind of face-to-face conversation about the, the, the issues that are troubling to the, to people. So I think that's unfortunate.
Alyssa?
So I got the sense towards the end of the meeting that folks thought that a second meeting would be useful because at the end, those details were starting to be discussed and debated. So I'm definitely in support of that. Also, you know, I'm thinking about other debt exclusions that have passed successfully and in 2019, three passed, all in the same year. Lot bigger dollars than, than we're talking about. And I'd love to get the dollar amount down as much as we possibly can. But it sounds like even, even if it, if it came down to 30 or, or 20 million, that, that there's still an issue from the FinCom about timing and size and scope. So it's all of those things in addition to, to cost and affordability. And, you know, there was one comment made, I think it was at an ALG meeting about not wanting to spend almost as much on a public works facility as we are spending on the, the Boardwalk campus. And I, and I thought that was really strange because the Boardwalk School is a benefit, obviously, for the whole community because we have great school in town, but directly benefits only the families that attend, whereas the DPW facility benefits 100% of the residents in town. So I'm not happy about my taxes going up, but I am happy to, to spend money on something that, that everybody in town benefits tremendously from.
Thank you, Alyssa. They can't even fit some of the newer trucks in the bays for mechanics, you know, needing to be, like, that's doesn't, that's horrible to me.
They can fit them in, they can't, they can't work on them.
They can't work on them. They can't fit them in the bay. Yep.
I guess one other thing that I would say is that we've already done this. You know, 55 years ago, we built a public works facility that was half the size that it needed to be. And I don't want to make that same mistake again. And I also don't want to make the mechanics work on the vehicles outside, like the, the school bus mechanics.
Yep.
Have to, have to work on the school buses in, in the weather.
Thank you. Are we finished with our discussion? Yep. Yep.
So I watched the session on Friday night, the Joint FinCom Select Board, and those two bodies seem to be, to me, about as far apart as they were on October 8th during the FinCom meeting. So my question is, is there going to be another mediated session? Because there's only five Select Board meetings between now and elections and Town Meeting, and I didn't see any movement on Friday night.
So we have a different perception. I thought we made progress. Just having a discussion was progress. And I was going to throw that out there. Should we have another meeting? Should I organize with Jason another meeting, whether it's moderated or not?
I, I think so. I, I heard that most clearly from Christie, that she was hopeful.
Yep.
That we could, we could start discussing, you know, some of the, the details. I can't remember exactly what she said.
David?
That's, that's fine with me. I, no objection, whatever. I, I was thinking at the time, you know, with so many people in the room, it was difficult to make progress. You know, I was almost, I was thinking to myself during the session, you know, would it be better to have a subcommittee consisting of two people from the Select Board and two people from the Finance Committee that went off and discussed things and came back with some conclusion or not, you know? But I, I don't object to another, another full session. I think that I, I would want the right orientation. You know, I think the, the marriage counseling model is not, it, it might help relations between the, the committees, but, um, I, I don't think that it, it helps, you know, make a decision on this project. And frankly, I'm not even sure that it helped relations between the committees because I think it, some people by the end were actually a bit annoyed, right? And I, I think that that was not good, right? You know, I think that we, we've had other conversations about this that have not, you know, gotten people annoyed. I mean, but anyway, um, I, I don't know what, what the solution is. But if, if we did have a whole, all of us meeting again, I would propose some kind of different style. You know, and maybe, just saying that, I'll, I'll put this out there, that maybe Joanne could moderate because to me, it's almost like Town Reading style, right? Where, you know, she, she deals with 650 people that don't agree and, you know, lets people speak and, you know, finally, you know, someone moves to the previous question. Anyway.
Our discussions were limited to specific questions, which was kind of unfortunate, and, but I, I hear you. So I will see if I can set some, get some dates from Jason. Jim?
My only thought about dates is we do have this process going on where they've, will or have submitted some questions and they're getting some answers. So probably meeting after they get their answers is probably a good idea.
Thank you, David.
I'm sorry about this, but thank you very much for bringing that up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
One of the things that the moderator said at the end, based on some things that some Finance Committee members said, was that not all the responses were getting back. And I, I started wondering about that. I, and it may be that those of us involved are making different assumptions. So when I'm attending one of the FinCom meetings, if they ask me for some information directly, I make sure that it gets back to them. However, if they send a request to the Select Board, I don't do anything with it because I assume that either you as Chair or Dean, or Dean as, as the, the project lead. But maybe we need to make a different call there if, if we think that anything is falling through the cracks, you know, maybe designate one of us to respond to FinCom requests.
I'll follow up with that.
I mean, if you want me to do it, I'll volunteer to do that. I'm, you know, at almost every meeting, I'd be, be happy to do that. But I, I think that we just need to make, make sure that nothing gets dropped.
Thank you. Yes. Approve, number 12, approve intermunicipal agreement with Littleton for public health nurse position.
Thank you. This is something that we've been working on. We, we talked about this a little bit at the budget workshops a few weeks ago. We've had a very difficult time filling the public health nurse position. Nursing in general are hard, hard positions to fill. And this particular specialty, public health nursing, is, is very hard to fill. And so Penny, under Penny's leadership, we've been looking at a partnership with Littleton. Littleton doesn't have a public health nurse either and they would like one. And so we are working on an arrangement where we would share that staff person. It would be primarily an active employee, but they'd work 13 hours over in Littleton. Littleton would cover 33% of the total cost, including benefits for that person. Currently in the budget, it's a part-time position. So this would be elevating it from a part-time position to a full-time position. But I think that's one of the things that would help us attract a candidate, which we haven't been able to do for quite a few years. So Littleton is actually still reviewing this with their town council. I just got a note from the Town Manager this, this evening saying that they weren't necessarily ready with it as written, but I think the concept of it is, isn't going to change. So I'm asking the board to consider authorize us to move forward with this under the terms generally as outlined in the IMA. If anything really substantive changes, I would bring it back, but I don't expect it to. And I would look forward to any comments or questions or concerns about that now. If, if you want me to bring it back later, I can also do that.
And this contract's just for a year? Is that right?
I think we have it set up as three years, but we'd have to tell each other by May if we don't want to continue for some, for one reason or another.
Yep, thanks.
This is a similar arrangement we have with Boxborough for veterans and with, actually with Littleton also for other positions that we share. So it's a model that's worked.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. And, you know, anything to, to help the, the hiring here. I just wanted to just understand the, um, the particulars. What, if we, we don't need to vote on anything tonight, we're just looking for a kind of a thumbs up that we're okay with you moving forward, you'd continue negotiating an agreement, which you'd bring back for us to, us to sign, right?
I could go either way. I wouldn't mind if you authorized under the general terms here, but if you wanted to, me to come back, I could do that too.
I'm okay with authorizing tonight.
So, so would we authorize the Town Manager to sign or we have to sign anyway?
Or we would sign at a later date.
I think the motion could be such that you authorize an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Littleton for public health services substantially as presented in the packet and that the board will sign it later. But it doesn't have to be voted again. You, you can just do it administratively at a meeting or, or digitally.
Sounds good. So moved. Is any, any other discussion or no?
Fran, did you move?
Well, I...
You said so moved.
I did, but it wasn't, yeah, okay.
Do you want me to do it for real?
Yes, for real.
I, I moved to authorize the Town Manager to negotiate an intermunicipal agreement with Littleton for a, a public health nurse with conditions similar to those presented in the packet.
Second?
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alyssa Nickel votes aye. Mr. Snyder-Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Arsenault?
Aye.
Aye. So moving next to discuss fiscal year 2026 budget recommendation.
So the budget was presented in early January after several presentations with sort of previews of different components of it. The present, the proposed budget hasn't changed since that time. However, we we've gotten some additional information about one of the cost drivers that we deal with every year, which is health insurance. We understand that our health insurance rates may actually go up up as much as 14.8%. And we were thinking the in the eight to 10 range. We currently are budgeting just under 10% for the health insurance budget. And we're not going to know until later this month what our actual rate is. So the good news is that we're capped at the average. So even if for some reason our our rate calculations come up to be even more, our maximum liability is 14.8%, which really isn't great news, actually. That's that's bad news, no matter how you look at it. But anyways, I think as a as a result, I've I've identified some ways that we could reduce the current proposed budget by 160,000 to meet that additional expense if it if it does come up. So some of the ways that we would do that would be look at salary and expense items. I think we could reduce about 110,000 in various expense items, such as professional development, office supplies, postage, and contractual services. And I think one of the larger decreases would be one of the new firefighter positions that we're proposing. If we had to cut 160,000, we'd have we'd have to look there. And instead of adding two, add just one, which would still be an incremental increase. And then we could plan to fill that position in FY '27. And it's still progress in the direction that we want to go. The other thing that we would do to get to the 160 reduction would be to reduce the clicker expense from capital by 25,000. We're going to seek a grant for that and and start that now and see if we can spread that cost out further. And then also, we have a roof design in there for 50,000 that we would reduce by 25,000 because we're we're doing it now anyways. And we can just phase it out differently. And so if we had to reduce the budget by 160,000, which as of today, we we don't necessarily have to. So I'm not recommending any changes today. But I'm just explaining to you how I would recommend we get there if we have to. And if you have ideas different from what you just heard, it would be helpful to hear that now. And then at the meeting on the 24th, which at that point, I believe we will have our rate known. And I will be presenting any recommendations for changing. If you have ideas for different from what I just said, I can bring those incorporate those into what we recommend.
Thanks, John. Any questions or it's hard to hear just, you know, cuts to office supplies or professional development, I have to say. So my comment, I'm sorry. It's it's I Does anyone else have any? No.
I'll say it out loud. I I I wouldn't come up with any, I wouldn't have come up with anything different. I I think you're headed in the right direction. Hope you don't have to do these things, but I'm glad you've got a plan. Yeah.
There's an attendee with hand raised.
Yeah. Colin Colin User. I don't mean Colin User.
Hi, that's Karen. Hi. I have a question about the additional positions at the fire department. So there there are six vacancies right now. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so how, I'm just curious here. How likely is it that those six vacancies get filled?
Yeah, that's that's part of the the rationale for identifying, for for pointing to that staffing plan as one that we can phase in instead of doing it right away. With with six vacancies, adding two, we probably wouldn't need to add two right away. Adding one would be more appropriate. We do think that we can fill these positions. And once we're able to make a few changes that we're working on operationally and with the collective bargaining, we think we'll be able to fill these positions quicker than we have in the past. So.
All right, thank you.
David?
So in in response to the caller, I just wanted to say that the fire department staff shifts to a a level of staffing that is a number of firefighters. And so when we have open positions, it's like having someone on vacation. And so we pay somebody else time and a half to be there. And so the in in some cases, when we fill in a position, it actually costs us less.
Any other comments or reflections? No, good. And lastly, discuss Acton Leadership Group.
So the the latest version of the ALG plan was published. Well, it was sent out to ALG members and I think the Select Board as well. It hasn't changed since that time. The next meeting is the week of the, I think it's next week. And so this, after the school budget workshops this weekend and where we're at now, I think we'll start to talk about it's currently balanced with the the numbers that are in there now from the assessments from Minuteman, the assessment from ABRSD. And with the budget as proposed, it's balanced. But any changes to that would require more work to balance it. And then, of course, there's always discussions about some of the other variables in the plan, such as reserve use and capital projects, so.
Thank you. David?
So the 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 Finance Committee said even during Friday's session, even though it was not really related to the DPW, that they wanted to reduce the town's operating budget increase to 3% from about four and a half percent where it is now. There are a few things I just wanted to to point out for that to that there. We almost all of that increase, well, really all well, the most of the operating increase. I'm going to change this once more. All of the operating increase is due to salaries and benefits and is largely influenced this year by the great benefit increases in health care and retirement. Everything else in the operating budget is essentially level funded. Maybe with some of the cuts that the the town manager mentioned that if we have to do for the the supplies and whatnot, that actually the everything else category might come down. And so that we there might be a negative increase to everything else. And it there's a big increase to salaries and benefits that accounts for most of that. The other thing that we have is projects, right? Most of the projects, the the big component that we have in year one, sometimes all of it, you know, is 100% of it. Sometimes it's the year one thing. It depends on the the actual motion at town meeting. Comes out of free cash. We could reduce the number of projects. I'm not advocating for that. I'm just saying we we could reduce. But two things about that. One is that doesn't reduce the any tax increase because that money would just remain in free cash. And secondly, we specifically said at ALG last year that we were deferring some projects in order, the town was deferring some projects in order to make things work last year. We had the 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 dire problem in the at the the school district. And we were trying to, you know, if we had kind of solved the whole problem, we would have needed to have use almost all of the override. But we set ALG settled on using 6.6 million dollars of the the override. And to make all that fit, the town canceled a number of things so that everything fit in that the the 6.6 million dollars that ALG recommended in the end. But part of that discussion at the time was the town was deferring projects so that, you know, everything else could work. But we couldn't defer projects forever. And we we actually reduced the the you know, the the percentage of the pie, as some people like to refer to it. I don't like to say that because it's not not a rule. But it is a it is a measure of what we do. So we we reduced that. And that that's great, actually. I voted for that. I think that was the right thing to do. But we also, again, explicitly discussed that we couldn't reduce the projects ever. And everybody, there there wasn't a specific consensus. But we specifically talked about the the town coming back next year and making up for some of the projects that it deferred. And now some would say that because the percentage increase in the town as proposed this year is greater than that at the school, the town has to reduce to the level of the school. I don't see that. I don't see that as a goal. I don't see that as being equitable. In in this particular year, the the this the 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 school committee is asking for less in their assessment. And that makes makes things a little bit easier for us. And in some ways, this is a a good year that where we can add projects back. I want to also make it clear that some on the Finance Committee had proposed last year that we, you know, work into the ALG model 400,000 dollars, using 400,000 dollars of untaxed levy this year. Not only did we not do that, but we are coming in less than that by something like 134,000 dollars. Or I'm not sure that that last number, I'd have to look at the the model. So and I think that is also the the right thing to do. I think not spending the untaxed levy this year is is important because we need that reserve for 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 coming years. But I I'm just going to to point out that we're coming in much less than where the Finance Committee was talking at the end of the last budget cycle. So I'm I'm a little confused here and dismayed that we're talking about this. And I don't know where ALG is going to come out on this. But I I expect that it's going to be a big topic of discussion.
Jim?
I wanted to check with, my impression is that the school representatives seem to be in line with the kind of general agreement that you're talking about, that their 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 budget is, you know, has very low increases this year. And it makes room for us to have that slight, you know, just to be able to pay all those salaries and benefits. Is that your impression too? Is this mostly a battle with FinCom?
So so ALG has not come to a specific consensus on that, so I don't want to 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 speak for them. I will say that the ALG, sorry, the the school committee, after their first budget presentation, doesn't exceed that amount. So in their their second and any subsequent budget reviews, they can lower that amount, but they never go up. They set that initial amount somewhat limited by Boxborough's capacity to pay without Boxborough having to incur an override this year. And so that did relieve you know, us, us, the town of Acton, for our our assessment being a a bit lower, the assessment to us being a bit lower. I want to say, though, that this is not easy for the schools either, right? They're they're cutting probably about 19 FTEs this year in addition to cuts last year and the year before. And so, but that's not this board's call, right? The school, the school committee decided what what they were doing and the the assessment they were going to request from the towns. And it you know, and so we're we're having, you know, the this board will likely be setting the tax rate in the fall less than we would have expected a a year before that. And so I I think we're we're doing a good job managing things. And the fact that, you know, the 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 benefit expenses for employees are so expensive. And we've come back a little bit on projects from last year to me is an is an issue of fairness.
And ALG hasn't met for a while, so next week we'll Alyssa, do you have anything to add or no? Are we moving on?
I think there's nothing to move on to except a motion to adjourn. So you're the the ALG rep here. Did you have any questions?
I always have, I I don't have any outward questions.
Because this is the last meeting before the next ALG meeting. So you don't get any more chance to ask questions?
No, no, I have
Well, you can ask John.
I took some notes. I have notes that I have taken.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then would you like a motion to adjourn? I move to adjourn.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Nickel votes aye. Mr. Snyder-Grant?
Trying to represent the 21st century, I say yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And Ms. Arsenal?
Aye. Good night.